I call this regular meeting to order at 6:35. Mayor Wu is attending tonight's meeting via teleconference from New Taipei City in Taiwan at the address listed on the agenda. Pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Tony Ding.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Wu. Vice Mayor Menchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Chan.
Here.
Councilmember Ding.
Yeah.
Councilmember Herrera Avila.
President.
Okay, closed session report. Our city attorney will now give the closed session report from the special meeting held earlier tonight.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, one item was taken up by the council, and that is labor negotiations with group listed on the agenda. No reportable actions were taken by the council in closed session.
Okay, thank you. We will now have some announcements from our chief city clerk.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on the city's online platforms. If you wish to address the city council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk at this time. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, approval of agenda order. Staff has requested that item 2A, recognition of fire department promotions, be removed from tonight's agenda and brought back at the March 18th meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda order as amended?
Yes, I move. So move.
Okay, we got a first.
I second.
We have a second. Clerk, roll call, vote, roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Chan.
Yes.
Councilmember Ding.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Menchaca.
Yes.
Mayor Wu. Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, next item, please.
Recognition of Ms. Friendship Esther Ho, 2024 Miss Los Angeles Chinatown Pageant. We now invite Ms. Esther Ho to come forward to the podium. Vice Mayor Menchaca will make the presentation.
Okay, thank you. So Esther, as a resident of San Gabriel, we're very happy to be presenting this certificate to you, and let me read it so the public can also hear it. In recognition of your crowning as Miss Friendship of Miss Los Angeles Chinatown 2024, the mayor and the city council of San Gabriel wish to congratulate you on this remarkable accomplishment and recognize your nonprofit work for the betterment of the local community, presented today and signed by all the council members. So I invite you now to say a few words.
Thank you so much for the recognition today. It really is a pleasure to be here. During my entire reign, I really tried my best to hold the spirit of San Gabriel Valley, especially the city of San Gabriel, because it has treated me incredibly, incredibly well. So even once my reign is over, I'll continue to carry that spirit with me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I now invite my council colleague to come and take a picture with her. Let's see, next item, please.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the clerk. Mayor Wu, is there anyone at your location wishing to address the council?
And Madam Vice Mayor, I have no speaker cards.
Great, next item, please.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the clerk. Mayor Wu, is there anyone at your location wishing to address the council?
And Madam Vice Mayor, I have no speaker cards.
Great, next item.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. Mayor Wu, is there anyone at your location who has requested to pull an item?
We have not received a request from the public to pull an item.
Thank you. Would any council member like to pull an item for separate discussion? Okay, do I, oh, I'm sorry, did you want to, oh, okay.
Want to move the motion.
Okay, well, do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
To move for the full consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I have a first, do I have a second?
Yes, I'd like to second.
Okay, great. So clerk, roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Chan.
Yes.
Councilmember Ding.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Menchaca.
Yes.
Mayor Wu. Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Next item, please.
Public hearing. Adoption of resolution number 25-03 related to permanent local housing allocation, year five funding, and proposed eligible activities.
Okay, I now open the public hearing. Acting Community Development Director Samantha Tevezart, is that correct? Will make the staff presentation. So you may begin.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. The item before you this evening is the permanent local housing allocation, year five funding. To provide a little bit of background, starting in 2017, Governor Brown signed 15 housing bills aimed at addressing the state's housing shortage and high housing costs. The housing bills included Senate Bill 2, which is the Building Homes and Jobs Act. And this act established the $75 recording fee on real estate documents. The fees collected would be provided to local governments in accordance to a specified formula. The bill also established the permanent local housing allocation, which is the PLHA program, which is a five-year plan administered by the Los Angeles County Development Authority, or LACTA. The program is funded through the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, and the program provides funding to local communities for housing-related projects and programs that will increase affordable housing supply for Los Angeles County residents. HCD released a notice of funding availability, the NOFA, for year five on December 5th of last year, and LACTA is the applicant on behalf of LA County. There are 88 incorporated cities, including the city of San Gabriel within the county, in addition to the unincorporated areas. The funding to be utilized, the eligible activities identified by the grant, includes pre-development, development site acquisition, and construction financing for affordable multifamily housing, also funding for affordable rental and ownership housing, in addition matching funds to local and regional housing trusts, as well as homeless programs, oops, and accessibility modifications for low-income housing, also for foreclosures and downpayment The San Gabriel is estimated to be allocated approximately a little bit over $135,000 for year five. In the past four years, the PLHA funding program has come before the city council, starting year one in 2020. The estimated allocations are shown on the slide here. During 2021 and 2022, there was a little bit of an increase, but as we go towards year four and now into year five, there is a decrease in the amount of available funding. To date, the funds reimbursed to the city of San Gabriel is approximately $94,500, and this fund has been set aside for the 405 South Delmar 100% Affordable Senior Housing Project, and recently, an additional $384,000 has been made available by LACTA for reimbursement to the city. So the recommendation before the city council this evening is to conduct the public hearing, adopt resolution number 25-03, for the following actions, which is to elect the eligible activity subject to state approval for year five, and this is for the pre-development development activity related to a low-income project, and to allocate, upon state approval, the $135,222 for year five of the PLHA allocation towards activity one, and to authorize the city manager to execute a new contract with LACTA for the five-year PLHA Plan Grant period and for year five of the allocation, and to make any necessary adjustments to reflect the actual allocation of the funds to San Gabriel. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you. Does any council member have factual questions for staff to clarify the report? Okay, I see none. Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Madam Vice Mayor, I have no comment cards. Mayor Wu, is there anyone at your location wishing to speak?
I'm going to now turn it to our city attorney. He would like to have a few words.
Thank you. Just very briefly, just want to clarify number three recommendation, just so it's technically accurate. It should be authorized the city manager to execute new contract with LACTA and any other required documents. So we're not limiting, otherwise, we're limiting any other documents only with LACTA. And the intent is to conclude the all necessary documents and allow the city manager to execute them, so we don't have to come back to you.
Okay, thank you. I will now close the public hearing, and it's now time for council deliberation and discussion. Who would like to start? We don't need to have any discussion, we just have to vote on this. So if there's, do you have, okay?
Yeah, just want to also clarify, actually clarify the question. So actually, this public hearing is for the previous, the five years, the, and of the five years, the allocation, and plus additional, another five years, the contract. Is that correct?
No, this is for the last five year of the five-year plan, so this is for, yes.
Last five years, so this is like last year.
The last of the five-year program, yes.
Okay, so no more, another, okay.
Until further notice from the state.
Okay, because the little bit, because the authorized city manager executed the new contract, so that's why I feel have another contract for the five years. So, so actually, it's done, it's no more, right? So just the last year, we want to accept that this grant. Okay, understand. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? I would like to entertain a motion from somebody, we, I would like someone to make the motion.
I take a motion.
Okay, but we have an amended, as amended, by our city attorney, because he had some language.
As amended.
Okay, as amended, so we have a first.
So the city attorney repeated, okay?
Well, you could just say, staff recommendation as amended by the city attorney. Do I have a second?
Actually, sorry about that. May I have one quick, easy question?
Sure, absolutely, we don't have a second.
Sorry, I forgot I did have a quick, easy question. Oh, on item 5A of the, of the agenda, staff report, the red page five, just wanted to make sure that we're, we're all in the clear, let's see, 5A, make sure I get to the right, red page five. Yeah, yes, the LACTA attachment. Near the bottom, it, it says that there's a due date of February 14th, 2025. Is that, I just wanted to confirm that it's okay and they're not going to get mad or something?
Yes, it's acceptable to LACTA.
Okay, great, just kind of, I noticed that, I said, uh-oh. But okay, as long as they're okay with it, and, okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, so, so we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I guess while I'm here, I'll second.
Okay, great. Please, Chief City Clerk, please take the roll call, or, City Clerk, sorry.
Councilmember Chan.
Yes.
Councilmember Ding.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Menchaca.
Yes.
Mayor Wu. Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Next item?
Next item, please.
Ordinance number 718, amending Title XI Business Regulations to add Chapter 127 of the San Gabriel Municipal Code relating to sidewalk vending and amending Title VII Traffic Code to amend Section 72.012 relating to parking by peddlers and vendors. Introduction and first reading.
And Samantha's not moving.
For the rest of the evening, yeah. Okay, now open the public hearing. Acting Community Development Director Tevezart will make the staff presentation.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, Mayor, and members of the city council. The item before you is Code Amendment CA 25-001. The ordinance before the city council this evening is in response to Senate Bill 946 and 972. The next few slides staff will go through relatively quickly as it was presented to the city council last month. Again, Senate Bill 946, what it does is it establishes parameters for local regulations for sidewalk vendors. It allows for time, place, and manner regulations, and also it requires compliance with the California Retail Food Code. What it prohibits cities from regulating would be the overall number of sidewalk vendors, requiring consent of non-governmental entities, and limiting vendors to specific parts of the right-of-way, as well as designating certain neighborhoods or areas for sidewalk vending. What it does is it allows cities to set limits on hours of operation, maintain sanitary conditions, establish requirements for compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and require sidewalk vending permits, as well as business license and other state agency permits and licensing. What Senate Bill 972 requires is it's an update to the California Retail Food Code itself to specifically address sidewalk food vendors. It establishes the legal framework for sidewalk vending, and also it functions to enhance the safe-on-site food preparation of sidewalk vendors. So the regulations proposed before the city council this evening includes definitions, as mentioned in, at the discussion meeting. These definitions are taken from the Senate Bill itself. Two important definitions discussed at the prior meeting, what is considered roaming and what is considered stationary, and essentially roaming is when a vendor completes a transaction, moving from place to place versus a vendor that is stationary at a fixed location for all transactions. Also, the proposed regulations establishes the time of operation, starting with non-residential areas. It was also discussed at the prior meetings whether there was time limitations in further review of the Senate Bill, using very similar language. The time limitations for non-residential areas would be the majority of the operating hours within the non-residential area, but not to be up to 24 hours if there is a 24-hour business operating within the area. Also, for roaming sidewalk vendors within the residential areas, there is a time limitation between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM. And then also stationary vendors are not allowed in residential areas. Then the regulations goes into distance requirements prohibiting vendors from being within 500 feet of a farmer's market or a special event, also prohibiting operations one hour before and after a school session, limiting the location from being within five feet of the streetlights, 15 feet of hydrants, bus shelters, driveways, and then also limiting and then also limiting vendors from being within 20 feet of another vendor entrance or exit of a building, or also within 45 feet of an intersection. And additionally, vendors are to be on a sidewalk of not less than nine feet and to also provide a clearance path of at least four feet. The proposed regulations also includes requiring a seller's permit to be filed with the Department of Tax and Fee Administration, and what staff learned is this was formerly the Board of Equalization, so that is the current name for the agency, and also the requirement of a city business license as well as a health permit from the Los Angeles County Public Health. So the application that will be established for the city of San Gabriel, again, is, is an application itself. It also includes a requirement, as mentioned, for the seller's permit, the health permit, as well as the business license. Once the, these documents are provided, then the city will issue a certificate, and this is a one-year approval, either with or without conditions, and that would depend on the vendor and the location, and also there will be an application fee. As for violations, as discussed at the prior meeting, the first month with the implementation of the regulations, it would be an educational process with, with the public, the community, and vendors. But then, once the program is established and there are any violations following a warning, then the, the fees will be as shown on the slide. And if there is a further violation, then it would be a revocation of the application. And the additional proposed amendment this evening would be to add Section D to San Gabriel Municipal Code 7D 2.012 within the traffic code, and this is to establish a distance requirement from driveway openings for mobile food trucks or any mobile food vendors. And this is, this, this distance requirement is consistent with sidewalk vendors as well as limiting, or not limiting, but prohibiting food trucks from setting out tables and chairs. As mentioned at the discussion meeting, there's an existing regulation within the code that talks about not obstructing the sidewalk or the public right-of-way. This is just an additional enforcement of that regulation. And so with that, the recommendation before the city council this evening is to conduct the public hearing and discuss the proposed ordinance number 718, waive the full reading and introduce ordinance number 718 by title only. And that's an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Gabriel, California, amending Title XI Business Regulations to Add Chapter 127 of the San Gabriel Municipal Code relating to sidewalk vending and amending Title VII Traffic Code to amend Section 72.012 relating to parking by peddlers and vendors and to waive future reading of the ordinance and schedule the second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the next regular city council meeting. And the ordinance would then become effective within 30 days after adoption. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Does any council member have factual questions for staff to clarify the report? Okay, Councilmember Herrera Avila?
Yeah, thank you. Do we have fees yet for such, do we, we do?
No, not at this time. That's something that staff will be bringing before the city council as part of the fee schedule.
And then the last question, anything related to, to trash disposal that we're going to want to add to, to our loss?
Is there any specific language?
Yeah, so let's just say we go through this process and we say, okay, we, we're okay with the vendors being here, as long as they follow the guidelines, but then they set up, okay, a good distance away from the bus station, but then they start, then we start noticing that they're throwing trash. Some, some of these bus stations have trash cans, and we notice that they're throwing trash. If there's nothing stopping them from throwing excessive amounts of trash, I mean, I think that becomes a burden to the city. So is there anything that we can add that can ask them to, to have their own trash mechanism or trash can, at least bare minimum?
So that isn't specifically addressed within the ordinance this evening, however, as part of the?
Yeah, I believe so. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in the text, it does talk about all the vendors are required to have their own trash disposal system.
127.
They're not supposed to throw it in, I guess, city trash.
Section H of 127.3.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's on page 12 of the staff report, red page 12, very top, H on the top row.
We can read it, or I'll read it. It says, "A sidewalk vendor must carry a waste disposal bag or container to permit the disposal of trash, food, or liquids."
Got it, thank you.
Are there any other questions, factual questions? Okay, then Chief City Clerk?
I'm sorry, not factual question necessarily, but I just wanted to thank Ms. Tuisart and her team for doing a really detailed job. I know there's, there's a lot of detail in here, but I think it'll go a long way in terms of really clarifying our rules and making sure that our rules are, everybody understands them and, and we, that, that they will be applied fairly and, you know, so that we have some control over, you know, this sidewalk vending issue. So thank you.
Do we have something that, let's say, for example, you set up shop, and then the business is not in favor of you having their shop there? Is there anything to protect the businesses within our agreement here? I didn't see anything.
Thank you, Councilman Herrera Avila. Unfortunately, that's not something the state would allow. As long as they meet all the permit requirements of getting a health department permit, a sales tax permit, the city's permit, and they're not within 15 feet and, and 45 feet intersections and all of that, then it's not up to the property owner that's adjacent or the business that's adjacent. They have unfortunately no way around that.
Okay, are there any other factual questions? Okay. Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Madam Vice Mayor, I have no speaker cards. Mayor Wu, is there anyone at your location wishing to speak?
I now close the public hearing. It's now time for council deliberation and discussion. Who would like to start? Okay, Mayor Wu.
Yes, Mayor, they are in discussing the permitting process with the city's business licensing division. Food trucks and eventually sidewalk vendors will be treated very similar to a brick-and-mortar business, where whatever documents are required, whether it be DBAs, I mean fictitious business names, sales tax, all of those documentations would be very similar. The impounding only applies, right, to sidewalk vending.
I'm sorry, Mayor, City Attorney has a comment?
Thank you. And Mayor, that option is available in instances where the violations create an imminent public health or hazard threat. In, in those instances, we do have the power to tow and remove those vehicles. But, but the, the multiple violation ultimate penalty of repossession or, or impounding is applicable to the street vendors, to the stationary or sidewalk roaming vendors.
If you turn to the staff report, page 13, which is the actual ordinance, the violations that Samantha laid out in her presentation, those are for those folks who get all of the licenses and are operating legally but then break some of our rules. We have a sec, a separate section of fines for those who don't even get the permit, and we don't start with those, we're not as nice. If you don't have a permit, we'll ask you to leave, and if you continue to operate, we have an ability to fine you. Starts at 250, then 500, and then 1,000. And if we find folks that are continuing to flaunt that, for instance, if they make a value decision and say, I'd rather pay a $1,000 fine and still operate and make money that night, we would utilize our city attorney's office to work through court and other options to get injunctions and that kind of thing.
State law prohibits criminalizing the violations, however, it doesn't prohibit or preclude the city from obtaining injunctions, which are a civil remedy from the court, as the city manager stated. Should we have a violator that ignores the monetary fines and continues to operate? We do have remedies available in civil court, which we would use to stop them from operating.
Yes, Mayor, to start with, and as the council has been updated recently, taking the lead for the current sweeps around the city has been the code enforcement division along with the police department and the health department. Without local regulations in place currently, the city is leaning on the health department for citation or for fines for any violations. And as the code becomes effective and the program is implemented, the city plans to continue with this joint effort until, until the information is out in the community, and then at that point, it would be predominantly code enforcement, again, taking that lead. And in the evening times, it's likely that staff will lean on the police department as well as the fire department for that enforcement.
Okay, thank you. That's why it's important that we, we decide something tonight, because the clock is ticking. Did you have a council member, Dean?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, actually, just to follow the, our mayor, the, the point out, right now you say that two months later, we can enforce, but in the, some media, I, I hear about it, our code enforcement is already industry to enforce that code. Is it correct right now?
Well, informational as far as the state law, but as far as citations, again, that's the health department that's issuing those fines.
Okay, so we already do the enforcement, okay. So, but based on current, not the city resolution, it's based on the state and, and the county, okay. So actually, this resolution, from my understanding, it's only apply for the sidewalk vendor, not apply to the, to the food truck?
With the added Section D for food trucks and the distance requirement from driveways.
The driveway, okay, so we can have the, our own, the, the regulation, so not against the, the county regulation?
This is additional because the Senate bill is only applied to sidewalk vendors.
Okay, all right. So, so actually, the distance apply for the, the food, food truck too, okay? And how about the intersection there, all the regulation is, is apply that too?
No, at this time, it's just from the driveway openings, which is 15 feet from a driveway opening.
But, but another for the intersection for the food truck?
Not at this time.
Okay, so actually, the sidewalk vendor still, it's a, when, when we enforce it, to tie, it's very careful, right? So if a food truck, it's a way, we, we have a less power to enforce, right, compared with the sidewalk?
If I may, Mayor?
Thank you.
There is a difference with regard to intersections. The regulations try to prevent the sidewalk vendors from being at a crosswalk or being where people need to cross or see the cars. A food truck may park on the street where there is parking permitted. Usually, red curbs going back from the intersection would prevent a food truck from being too close to the intersection to create a visual hazard. Obviously, if they are parked in that manner, we have the power to ask them to move.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, thank the Samantha, your department to do the this kind of report, and at least, I think the community also worry about it. They, I think that people, some people is welcome, have a, a lot of good choice for the food, but, but also is considered, it's a public safety too. So I, I glad our city have this kind of resolution to help the public. It's actually, we want to help the public safety plus the, the food health, the safety too. So hopefully, the community can understand it, so not meaning we do something, want to restrict to them, but that actually, it's a safety concern. So thank you, the, the support. I, I think we should have some starting point to do that. So actually, the, for the, for the, for the, our city attorney, so we can, if anything like some not really help, so we can change the resolution too for the future, right? If, if something we not consider very well or some too restraint or to, to lose the restraint, you know?
The council has the ability to amend the rules and regulations and the ordinance. They are only limited by the limits that are set forth by the state law. We, we cannot go beyond or below, depending on your point of view, of, of what, what the state law dictates.
Okay, I understand it. Okay, so thanks to, so I feel that we, we should be, start something, so then we can do the future if we need to do some adjustment, but still need to follow the law too, right? Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, yes.
You're acting mayor.
Yeah, am I? I'm still Vice Mayor. We got the mayor over here.
Okay, just kidding.
Okay, well, if there's no other questions, I, I do have a few questions. Oh, Councilmember Herrera Avila?
Okay, so based on sanitary conditions, right, I think we, we have some kind of authority over sanitary conditions. I know we have the section that you guys pointed out, 127.3, red section 12H, the sidewalk vendor must carry a waste disposal bag or container. Is there a way to make this more, I mean, the language I'm not that comfortable with? Is there a way to make this more, I mean, the language, I'm not that comfortable with, because this just means that they have to carry it. It doesn't have to be in a prominent location or visible. I think it should be more, more specific than just being able to carry it. If I'm a vendor, and you're giving me these regulations, I can have the authority and power to say, well, I carry one. But if it's not, if we're not making it that it's prominent in a prominent location, I'm afraid that they're not going to have a trash can out. Is there a way to change the language? So is that?
This is the first reading. We do have the ability to add additional language into the section if the majority of the council feels that this is not strong enough. A potential addition would be simply a prohibition from disposing of any trash in any public or private trash cans, which could be just added. The sentence can read, "The sidewalk vendor must carry a waste disposal bag or container to permit the disposal of trash, food, or liquids, and is prohibited from disposing any trash or other materials in public or private trash cans."
You see, I like that, because then we're helping the actual resident or the business owner, because what I see happening is somebody could easily go over there, go over there with their trash. This could be somebody shopping, or the vendor himself, and throw the trash somewhere where they're not supposed to. But if we don't have strict guidelines, I mean, technically, you're not supposed to be throwing stuff in other people's trash cans, that's more private. But if we can have that in the ordinance, I think that would be a safe approach when it comes to protecting the residents and the business owners. So something for the council to consider, if that's what we all feel comfortable with. And then, the other question that I had is, when it comes to washing stations, is that something that we, I don't think I see it in here, but is that something that we can ask for with street vendors? Is that?
Council member Herrera Avila, that's something that is covered by the Public Health Code. So when they get their health department permit, they're supposed to have washing stations for their food workers, not for the public, but for their food workers, and that's part of what their permit requires.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, well, I have a few comments myself. Samantha, the first thing is, there's a section there that talks about you can't operate within 45 feet of an intersection. But I do know homeowners who have had food vendors, for a variety of reasons, you know, at their property. You know, it could be, it's really a public area, but I know they might say, well, but I want them, or they can be closer, you know, they can be in our patio area, or whatever the case may be. I just want to make sure it's clear. It doesn't matter if you're the homeowner. I mean, no street vendors are being allowed in any residential, regardless of you're the homeowner or not. Is that the case?
A stationary sidewalk vendor is not allowed?
Well, exactly. But the roaming, roaming is roaming, but they can also be in the residential area, or can they?
They can.
Okay, so the roaming could be in residential, but the stationary cannot?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And just as a reminder, we're only controlling the public right of way.
But the way the rules read, it says, you can't have it in a residential area. That's what it says.
I don't think that the ordinance would preclude a private homeowner from having a vendor with a cart sitting on their front lawn, providing food for the kids that are gathered at the house.
Okay, well, that's different. That's more of a one-time thing. But we have people who are there every single day. And I know homeowners who actually appreciate them being there every single day. But the way it reads, it's all residential areas. I'm just, so they're preclude, so they can't have, even if you're a homeowner, you can't have them on your property, even if you give them permission.
Not if they're engaged in sale to the public.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to get clarification on that. Then, on page five, we talk about code enforcement built in, unless there's objection here. But I know that's been always frustrating for people, that they see something, I'm not saying they're right, but they have no ability to do anything, except call us, or call City Hall, or, you know, if they can report it, then, you know, the joy of reporting is that you can track it. Everybody tracks it. And so, it's easier for everyone. So, once it gets done, then you have that record, and then the resident feels like they're at least being heard. Is that something we can add to our website?
Yes, we can add a direct link to the code enforcement page, and code enforcement will get notified immediately.
Okay. But is it, it's like a reporting feature, just like Public Works? Is that something we can add? Okay. I think it would just bring some comfort. And then, regarding the food trucks, it says, "Food trucks cannot set out tables and chairs." No, no, I'm sorry. I think the food trucks doesn't say that, only says stationary and roaming sidewalks. Sidewalk vendors cannot set out tables. Or is it the opposite? Thank you. Trying to read the opposite. So, how does that work? I'm sorry. So, food trucks cannot set out tables and chairs. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's newly added language this evening.
Oh, if it's adopted. Okay, so where did you add that? I'm sorry.
That would be...
Oh, but it's on the screen, but is it in the ordinance?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. I trust all. Okay, I trust you. If it's there. Okay. And then, the second thing is, I noticed that some vendors, mostly the food trucks, there's something called noise, lighting, and signage. And we don't seem to have anything here. And what that means is, vendors may not use any music, horns, flashing lights, digital signs, digital advertisement, or any other visual media unless expressly approved in the vending permit. There are some food trucks, mostly, that I see, that can get a little distracting. The lights are really, I haven't heard anything, but talking with other cities, they do have that issue with our street vendors. Is there, is that, is it somewhere, I guess, recognized in the ordinance, or at least addressed, if we do have vendors like that? I don't know. Maybe there has been complaints. But is that something we should consider? One of you.
We absolutely can't. In talking with Samantha about this question earlier today, the only concern we would have at night, without having lights, would be safety issues. But I think the, one of the cities that you mentioned, Vice Mayor Manchaca, they had it as a requirement of their permit. So if we can allow them to have some lighting as part of their setup, I think we can accomplish what you're trying to accomplish, and it would keep noise and other things. So we can, we can just make that part of the permit process. And if you would like to add to the, and the council majority agrees, we can add a section that would just say, any noise, lights, and, what did you say, visual?
Yeah, it says noise, lighting, and signage. I don't know if we've had that issue. I don't know if there's anybody here from code enforcement, but whether it's the vending permit or the ordinance, I'm just, I just think we need to consider it, because if it does happen, or maybe it has happened, it needs to be addressed somehow. So if you want to do it through the vending permit process, and then, you know, we can, I'm hoping we can reevaluate this ordinance. I think someone mentioned it already, I think it was Councilmember Ding. You know, we should be looking at this ordinance maybe six months, or maybe longer, because there might be some loopholes. I don't want to hold this up. We need something right now. But if you can have a process where, let's reevaluate, let's see, you know, where those loopholes are, because can't think of everything. The noise, the lighting, the signage, maybe it's not an issue, so I'm comfortable putting it under the vending permit process. But maybe something to reconsider if we do bring it back.
I would suggest that we add it, if that's something that you would like to do. And we could make it as part of the permit process. That's something that they have to get approved. And my suggestion would be under general regulations, which is 127.03, that we add a next one under J, so it would be K. And we can just say that any music or amplified noise, any lights or signage are not allowed unless approved as part of the permit process.
Okay, yeah. I'm not saying they have to be dark, but it could be distracting, especially if it's noise. We're talking about, you know, businesses, or even though it can't be in a residential, but, you know, you have some overly aggressive vendors there. It can get pretty loud. Okay. Councilmember Herrera?
Can we, I like the idea of noise reduction. I mean, I'm not, the lights are not really distracting me, per se, but the noise, I see that, I haven't seen it, but I see that being an issue. Is it something that we can just say completely no on that, or, because it sounds like they're going to have to come, say, ask for permission if we do decide to go down that route?
We can. I think we can say no amplified sound is allowed as part of it. We have sound regulations in our normal code, but if you want to make it pertinent to just sidewalk vendors, I believe we could add that. That's a time, place, and manner type of a restriction.
As long as it's not unreasonable, it's allowed, under state law.
I mean, the noise, the lighting, and the signage, all that should be reasonable, I think. The signage, I mean, we just don't know what kind of, it could be offensive. It can be, you know, just like the lighting, if all this flashing is coming out, it could distract drivers. So I do like having noise, lighting, and signage, and then just see where, kind of allow our vending permit processor person, whoever that is, kind of decide you some judgment. And the vendor could always come back and say, okay, I can soften it, turn it off. But I think it really is a case by case, but at least it's a checkpoint, something to look at before it comes back to us, or, you know, a resident reporting it. So I like having it there.
I like the idea, too. So is that something that we have to vote on, or how does that work?
Well, we can amend the ordinance. We can do the staff recommendation and do, well, I'm comfortable with what you had mentioned about...
The trash?
Yeah, the trash.
I suppose we would amend subsection H and add subsection, subsection K for your noise and lighting.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make my first motion. How about that?
Well, I was actually...
Is that that?
You can have the glory if you want.
I agree with the...
Give it to Eric. Give it to Eric. We're working as a team. We're working as a team. Eric?
Okay, wait. I'm sorry. Let me, the city attorney? Oh, yes, I did. Yeah, because we had deliberation. Okay. So go ahead, Councilmember Herrera Avila. Okay, councilman, one of you.
I would like to make a motion to accept the staff recommendation with the minor adjustments for subsection H on page, read page 12, to include language regarding prohibiting the disposal of trash in public trash cans, and also adding a subsection K regarding lights, noise, and signage.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And is that clear, city manager, I mean, city attorney? Okay, so we have first, I know, first and a second. Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Chan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrera Avila?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Manchaca?
Yes.
Mayor Wu? Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Continued business? None? New business?
Awarded professional services agreement with HDL Econ Solutions for an Economic Development three-year action plan in the amount of $59,750. Acting Community Development Director Tuasart will make the presentation.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is awarding of contract, professional service agreement with HDL Econ Solutions for the three-year action plan. HDL did clarify with staff that the agreement is to clarify that it is with Hinder Litter Delamas and Associates, which is what HDL stands for, rather than HDL Econ Solutions. And there is a representative from HDL this evening to speak a little bit more about that. So the purpose of this action plan is to accomplish four general goals, and that's to support business growth, again, under expansion, retention, and attraction, also to create a strategic roadmap to implement the city's economic development goals, also to be consistent with the city's general plan. It is data-driven. It's to provide the market data to support the study, and it's to provide some plans and goals for the long-term sustainability of the city's economy. The selection process for this contract started with a request for proposal that was issued in July of last year. The city received a total of six proposals, and the firms were evaluated based on their qualifications, experience, and alignment with the city's goal. And the top three firms were interviewed for the selection. Right here, it shows the cost comparisons among the proposals submitted, and there was a range between $30,000 to just a little bit under $80,000, with HDL being second of the proposal. And HDL was selected based on their experience. The plan will be a two-phase plan, spanning from this year into the following year. The first year will be spent on data collection, market analysis, community engagement, and then formulating the strategic action plan, as well as providing recommendations. And then, the following year will be spent on the implementation of the plan itself. And this, this project is funded within, within the economic development division's budget. So it is something that is existing within the city's or the department's budget. And so, the recommendation before the city council this evening is to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Hinder Litter Delamas and Associates, HDL, in the amount of $59,750, to develop a three-year economic development action plan funded within a two-phase period, half of it this year, and the second half in the next fiscal year. And as mentioned, Bill Foster, on behalf of HDL, is present this evening for any additional questions.
That concludes your report?
And that concludes staff's report.
I think it's your last report, right?
Yes.
Thank you for being here. Does any council member have factual questions to staff to clarify the report? Okay. Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
I have no comment cards. Mayor Wu, is there anyone at your location wishing to speak? Thank you.
It's now time for council discussion. Who would like to start? There's no discussion? No? Okay. I just had a statement or comment. Well, go ahead.
Just, I was just going to say, it's pretty straightforward to me.
Yes. But I just had one thing I wanted to ask staff, or Mark in particular. You know, I was looking at this, and I understand the whole focus about, you know, development of projects, and how to attack tenants, mainstream shops, mom and pop, and so on, so on. But is there a way that it could also include assistance or suggestions, how we can improve our process? Because we've, we have 19 projects, and those 19, if they don't get built, we get no revenue. I mean, that's the way I look at it. We're trying to build. And we keep having these projects, and some I can understand, you know, it's financial, so it's the developer's side. It's not necessarily our side. But there's so many, and they've been out there for so long. I just feel like we need to improve our process, because if we're telling the, whoever, it could be the smaller developer, it doesn't have to be the big developer, but if there's something that's missing, or we can't move forward, there has to be a way that we can reach common ground and help push it, so it gets completed. Because that's a lot of projects, and they've been around for a long time. I can't believe that every one of them, it's because of financial, or, you know, they're at some stage, but is there a way this contract could also include that, or is that a whole separate contract? Because I know it's not part of the scope, but if they're trying to help... Because I know it's not part of the scope, but if they're trying to help us attract tenants, then we have to be able to tell those tenants that we're going to help them move through the process. And if they look at what we have right now, you know, they might wonder too, well, what's taking so long? How come it takes so long to get things done in the city of San Gabriel? So I'm going to throw that out.
In short, Vice Mayor Menchaca, I don't believe this scope or what we envision would examine our development process to see what's holding those development projects up. Samantha and I can look at those projects and provide counsel with a detailed report on what the status is on those, and what we think is the hindrance, or what those projects that are coming online, what's moving well with those. We will also work with a couple of our developers that we know very well and ask them for honest feedback. And I would encourage all of you as well to do it on the side, so that we're getting honest feedback from them, as well as to what works and what doesn't with our development process. What I think this study can help us with, with those projects, is to look and see what we can do to better attract the tenants that are going to be occupying those projects. So if we need to change some of our zoning to allow tenants that we currently don't allow, or if we need to be creative in the way we market to those tenants at a city, that's what this study will help us with. So I think in a roundabout way, it will answer some of what you're concerned about, but the development process would be a separate situation.
Thank you for answering that. I'm sorry, Samantha, is there anything you'd like to add? That's you, Samantha. No, from what Mark said, was there anything else? I just want to give you the opportunity to say anything more.
No, I think Mark covered it, but if there's any specific questions relative to what the plan may include, again, there is a representative from HDL that can speak more to that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Herrera Avila?
Avila, yeah, so that, just for clarity, this is something that we're going to do for the next three years, right? And we've done this before, once before?
To my knowledge, and correct me if I'm wrong, Samantha, this would be our first economic development plan. We've had information in our general plan before, but that is more long-term and far-ranging, very broad. This will be specific action steps that we can take over the next three years. So for this, it'll be our first time.
Got it. I just want to make sure that, that if we had one before, if we had something similar before that we've taken into consideration, what were those deliverables then? And not ignoring those deliverables, and I know that things change, and I just don't want to throw money here, and for us to throw money here, and then it's a nice idea, and then we don't use anything. So if we had other plans, I want to make sure that that's presented and compared to, even if it wasn't the three-year development plan, but if we have something similar to it, which is like more than likely what you're saying, the general plan, that we do compare it, and we do take into consideration where we're at with that, and what are we scratching from, things that we have committed before in the past.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chan, did you, you want to make the motion?
Oh, do we still have?
Is there any, yeah.
Just wanted also, okay, so we need to spend two years for the study, for the three years, the action. Is that correct?
Yes, as outlined, it is a two-phase project, and it's budgeted for through a two-phase period.
This year and the next, 2026, so probably end of the 2026, so we can get the report from their consulting company?
Councilman Ding, I think we're talking about the timing of the report versus our funding. Actual Phase Two will not take all of 2526, we're only talking about the funding for it. So half of it will be in this year's budget, and then starting July 1, we'll be able to fund the second half. So my anticipation is that will be done before the end of 2025 with the whole project.
Over the 2025, okay. So just budget to them, but the report, they should be, come out the end of this year?
That's correct.
So then we can make a decision for the future three years, the action plan. Yeah, okay, that's clarified. And another thing, yeah, it's, thanks to Samantha, I have the, like, development, the action discipline, it's to help us to understand it, because we want to, like, business-friendly, also through this kind of economic develop, to help our tax revenue, and help our street, it's more clean, more safety, right? And, yeah, one thing, I agree, the vice mayor requested, for our 19 project, can you help for the next meeting to what's going on, is it when they will be finished it? That's the bigger project, like the building project. But I hear about some, like, business, or residents, they're asking, some business, it's not the whole building, maybe there's some unit, it's vacant, long time nobody to use it. So how can we help them to find a proper way? We don't want this kind of, even unit to vacancy too. It's not good for the neighborhood, the business, it's not good for the city too. So, yeah, when they do the study, should be add on this kind of element on that to help we can, and help the some vacant unit to moving forward, yeah.
Can that be part of the scope too?
That is part of the scope.
Oh, okay.
The idea is that what are those vacancies, or those underperforming areas, what can we be doing different to attract retail tenants to those sites?
Okay.
Done.
All right.
Done.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Since we do have HDL present, I would like to understand, what kind of scope of work have you done that's similar to our city? And particularly with a city that's so historic with, like us. You know, if you know, if you probably did your homework, we have a church here, it's pretty historic. I think one of the fourth of the whole Mission areas. Have you worked with any of the other Mission Church cities? And I just kind of want to understand your scope of knowledge when it comes to our city.
Sure. My name's Barry Foster, I'm a principal and a managing director with Hinder Litter Delamas and Associates, and it's HDL. That's a great question. We've done, in California, we've done 20 economic development action plans, including 14 for Southern California cities. We've done a couple of strategies. We have one for Palo Alto about a year and a half ago. It was a pretty intense project, that was a $200,000 study for them. We're currently working on a strategy for the city of El Monte, and we slowed it down a little bit because of the election, but we anticipate having that be done here probably in the next three to four months. But every plan that we do is unique, we don't do cookie cutter plans. And so I started up the division, the company, 10 and a half years ago. We've done work for 235 local governments, mostly cities. Again, we don't do cookie cutter things, we look at the makeup of the community. I'm very familiar with San Gabriel. I worked for the city of Monrovia years ago, was very involved with economic development, revitalizing their downtown. We've done a lot of work for cities, looking at downtown environments, mixed use, all those kinds of things. We have an economic, we have a senior advisor that retired for the city of Pasadena about two and a half years ago, she's been with us for two and a half years. She was an economic development manager there, you know, very familiar with older cities and looking at the historic makeup and all that. And so I think that we understand that this community is unique and is special, and this plan's going to reflect that. And part of what we're going to do is, just with, it's a pretty robust outreach effort, through stakeholders, there's talking to community members, you know, we want to get all that information and that feedback as we put this plan together.
Just a follow-up question here. So you've mentioned working with Monrovia, were you part of, I think, what is it? They have like a farmer's market, is it a night market, farmer's market? Were you part of that as well? And were you part of helping them develop any other activities? I know they have like a good New Year countdown too, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but I just kind of want to know.
I was a staff member for Monrovia for about eight years, a long time ago. But one of the best things that Monrovia did was they put together really a master plan for their community, a blueprint, especially for their downtown. And while I was there, that, what we were able to do in terms of revitalizing the downtown actually helped Monrovia gain All-America City status. And so I was part of the group that started the farmer's market, started the family street festival on Friday nights. We actually made the downtown smaller than it was at one time, it just couldn't sustain itself, it was too big. And there was a lot that went into that, and, but they had the foundation or the blueprint for that community. There's been a lot of different council members and staff members, and whatever, the last, I worked there, I think I left 29 years ago. So there's been a lot of change, but that plan and that, and that vision for the downtown was put in place, and I was really adhered to, and it's still kind of unique for me to go back into that community and see what we put in place a long time ago, and it's a great community. But again, we try to make sure that all our plans are unique to that city characteristics, history, and all that, because cities are different, and we understand that.
Okay, thank you. City manager, God, I'm so sorry. City, well, no, I meant, I'm sorry for him, not for you. City attorney, would you like to ask your question to Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Real quick question, just the corporate relationship between HDL and HDL Econ Solutions?
HDL Econ Solutions is just a division of the company.
Okay, they're not a sub, right?
No. So the pair of companies, Hinder Litter Delamas Associates, and we have a number of divisions.
Great, thank you.
And I believe we provide sales tax service for you folks, so HDL does.
Thank you so much, I think that was all. So now I'm going to turn it to councilmember Chan, who's been very patient. Would you like to make your motion?
No, this seems like a great project, so, yeah, I'd be happy to make the motion to accept the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Great. City, I'm sorry, clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Chan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrera Avila?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Menchaca?
Yes.
Mayor Wu? Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Thank you. Oh, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment, is there anyone who, oh, I'm sorry, that's your part. Go ahead, chief city clerk.
Madam Vice Mayor, I have no request to speak.
Okay, city managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, and Mr. Mayor, remote. I just want to remind the council and the community that we have installed our lanterns in the plaza park across the street, and they look spectacular during the day, and I hope tonight, when we all come out of this meeting, that we'll see them all lit up, and they will look just as spectacular. Thank you to Mayor Wu for arranging those. The Walian County lantern looks great in person, and we'll send pictures so you can show our sister cities what they look like. Thank you, madam.
Thank you. Okay, council comments and conference meeting reports. Who would like to start? Councilmember Chan?
Sure, thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor. First, I wanted to start with just a quick, easy question for Mr. Mayor remotely. Regarding the lanterns, a few of us earlier this evening had a question about why one or a few of the lanterns have crabs on them, and it's not a, crab isn't one of the Chinese zodiac signs. Is there a certain significance to the crabs? Or is it just a fun cartoon design? Okay. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm sure it will, but I was just not sure if there was some kind of cultural significance to the crab that I wasn't aware of. Just a cartoon character, is what you're saying? Oh, okay, thank you, just curiosity. All right, on with the rest of my report. This was the non-official part of the report. Now, let's see, just a few things, on February 8, I was honored to attend our neighbor Alhambra's Lunar New Year Festival, so they did a great job. And on February 10, I had my monthly Chinese club meeting. It's the organization that I belong to called Chinese American Citizens Alliance, and they had their monthly meeting in Monterey Park. Actually, they do it in Monterey Park usually, but they had it at a different restaurant this month in Rosemead. Another one of our neighbors. So, and then on the 12th, I was also honored to attend the soft opening lunch at one of our new restaurants in San Gabriel. It's the San Gabriel location of Nem Summer Rolls Restaurant. I think they have one in our neighbor of Rosemead, but they just opened another location in our city, so, which we're very proud of. It's at 710 West Las Tunas Drive, it's the mini mall with Bon Chon and Parish Baguette. So that was a nice event. Yeah, that's all I have, so my report is finished, I yield my time, Ms. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Who would like to continue?
Okay, I'll go next. Just one thing, I rode with our chief of police and got a chance to see the needs of our community, and I was excited to just be and having time with him and listen to him, and see his way of leadership. That's all I have, nothing else to report, thank you.
Great, next.
How many minutes?
For you? Two.
Last two weeks, last two weeks, I attended a lot of the events, most it's Lunar New Year or Latin Festival, the different organization, different event. But I just mentioned, February 8, I have, I get invited from the San Marino, the Chinese club, they have the Lunar New Year Festival, so it's great. They actually, the fourth year to do that, so our neighborhood see. So, yeah, sounds like we are this whole San Gabriel Valley, it's having the, the lunar, the culture, okay? And February 10, I attended the SGB CAG Energy Committee, and it's the update for the Eden Fire, and especially they are invited by chief from Acadia to how they handle this disaster, to also the, let the community to understand it's Phase One, to clean up the tox, toxin, the contamination, the, how they are quickly remove it. So, yeah, that's update. And on the February 12, I have another committee, it's a transportation committee, because we are on the middle, so, but I just want to listen to, from them to help our resident on how to do the last mile to go to the metro, okay? And I, but especially, I got to hear about it, we get some fun for the, especially for the bike line, okay? And they arranged some fun to our city, I think it's 2026, right? It's 300, 300,000 something, the fun. It's actually, if like it's almost 17 or 16, 17, the city, they got a fun. I was, but the rest of the city didn't got anything, but we got something, but we are less one. A lot of city, they got more fun on that, so I hope we can get them all, especially we are historic city, we need to lay more, like, people if they can ride a bike, especially for our Mission District. I, we need to lay more like people if they can ride a bike, especially for our Mission District. So I, but most of it's talking about the, it's the valley and the Las Tunas. I think Las Tunas are pretty good too, for the, for the bike line. So, yeah, and the, let me see. Yeah, okay, so then the rest of it, too many, so I, thank you.
Great, thank you. Mayor Wu, would you like to say something? Thank you, Mayor Wu. I have a few comments. I was also gonna mention the 16 lanterns. They started tonight at Park Plaza, and they will be displayed 24/7 and until Sunday, February 23. So I encourage everyone to go to Plaza Park and take your social media posts. Looks really pretty out there. So thank you to Public Works for putting them up. The San Gabriel Police Department is now accepting applications for their community academy. Classes take place every Wednesday night, starting on March 12, from 6:00 to 7:30. The deadline for applying is Wednesday, March 5. I encourage everyone to really consider participating in this program. It's a great program. Everyone that I know that's participated is, always speaks very highly of the instructors and just the opportunity to get to know our police department better. The applications, you can either go online, or they're at the front lobby of the police department. And then on Friday, February 7, at 7:30, I enjoyed the performance of the Amanda Castrol Band at the San Gabriel Mission Playhouse. It was live music with some vintage favorites to some high-energy jazz. It was really incredible music and vibes. The drummer is a longtime San Gabriel resident and a friend, so it was really kind of special to be there. And so I encourage everyone also to check out the Mission Playhouse calendar. There's wonderful events taking place there, and hopefully even more so in the future. So with that, that concludes my report. Let's see, closed session, none? Okay, I was like, do we have one? And then the next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 4, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.